Counsel to order. Counselor Beesaw, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Assistant Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Counselor Bean?
President.
Counselor Volchman?
Present.
Counselor Beesaw?
Present.
Counselor Clark?
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Here.
Counselor Donnelly?
Here.
Counselor Green?
Present.
Counselor Joseph?
Yeah.
Counselor Caddy?
Yeah.
Counselor Tran?
Yeah.
President Puschmerich?
Present. Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing a public hearing petition, you'll have an opportunity to do so at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda to which you are speaking. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Sir, I believe you're here to speak to the special permit?
Yes.
You'll have an opportunity to do so at that time. Hearing none. We'll move on to an oral report from the Appointments Committee. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appointments met earlier this evening. There was one reappointment and one new appointment. The reappointment, Human Rights Commission, Mr. David Roth, 303 Tibbetts Circle, Fitchburg, term to expire May 1st, 2018. And under new appointments, Board of Library Trustees, Ms. Rosa M. D'Souza, 26 West Street, Fitchburg, term to expire January 1st, 2019. Both were unanimously passed.
What is the appointment's?
Check it.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize both Mr. David Roth and Ms. Rosa D'Souza, who are both here in the audience. If you'd please stand just to be recognized. Thank you both for your service. We look forward to you participating in city government. Thank you. Moving on to the report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. We reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
Do the records report through the second or second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Two letters of appointment as follows. That should be three letters. A, Anthony M. Zarella as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire January 1st, 2021. Communication B, Demetrius D. Phillips as a permanent reserve police officer for the City of Fitchburg. Item C, Mary Delaney as Chief Procurement Officer for the City of Fitchburg. Communications and reports from department heads. We have one communication in front of you this evening, communication from the Pension Reserve Investment Management Board.
Question, um, first off.
I have a motion and second that the communication from the Pension Reserve Investment Board be placed on file in the clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Communications other. We have a one communication, a letter from Bavensi and Donovan, attorney for Eric W. Sullender, trustee regarding special permit petition, 6516. Dear Ms. Farrell, this letter shall serve to confirm that our client, Eric W. Sullender, trustee of Neighborhood Development Trust's desire to withdraw its special permit petition filed on March 25th, 2016 with respect to the property at 1089 Franklin Road, Fitchburg, very truly yours, Bavensi and Donovan, attorney for Eric W. Sullender, trustee, Neighborhood Development Trust.
President, could we open here in 6516?
16. That pertains to that letter you just read.
All right. Counselors, we'll take, unless there are no objections, unless there are objections, we'll take that hearing out of order. 6516. 6516, again, special permit petition, Eric W. Sullender, trustee of Neighborhood Development Trust to renovate existing nonconforming, single-family home located at 1089 Franklin Road, Fitchburg, that has been abandoned or not used for a period of more than two years. Declare the hearing open. We do not have a petitioner here to be seated at the center table. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone, anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Sir, please come forward if you could.
(inaudible).
Well, if a couple of you would like to represent that interest and come forward, please identify yourself by name and address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kim Goodwin. I live at 28 Mountain Laurel Lane, which is in the Oak Ridge condo development up west Fitchburg. I'm actually also a member of the Board of Trustees for the Condo Association. We're here as the large group to express our concerns about this petition and about the past record of the group requesting this special permit. While we all can admit that Mr. Bavensi has been, had some very positive effects on the City of Fitchburg by all the developments that he has made, we also have to admit that there are some shortcomings in what Mr. Bavensi has done in the City of Fitchburg. We see very visibly about all the realty trusts and how we separates everything to make everything so they don't be responsible to each other. But as the Oak Ridge Condo Association, we have some very specific shortcomings from the original development that have not been addressed. And according to Hoden Management, which is the management company, stated that when their attorney went to find any bonds for completion bonds, they said that they couldn't find any. So specifically, the roads in the development have never had finished asphalt putting on, put on them, and now the roads are starting to deteriorate and starting to crumble. Second of all, in this, kind of in the center of the development, there was a very large unfinished portion, basically, we call it the gravel pit. It's been cleared or dug, excavated, blasted, and he's either forfeited it or given up on finishing it. So now in the center of the development, we have this very, not exactly pleasant to look at gravel pit in the middle of the development. The biggest concern is the roads because as, as the Condo Association has now taken over control of the development, we have no resources to pay to have a road repaid. Our concern would be that special permit by Neighborhood Development Trust, while we all know it's part of the Bavensi umbrella, we would be interested, request, respectfully request, that if and when this ever surfaces again, that some kind of enforceable stipulations be applied to these special permits to hold Mr. Bavensi and his related companies accountable to the commitments that he has not fulfilled on his existing developments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? Hearing none. Declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the counsel.
Motion for 65-16 based on a communication that I need to withdraw.
Second.
I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw to 6516. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Joseph.
I just advise the neighbors to keep an eye on the zoning board of appeals, upcoming agendas, to see if it surfaces someplace else other than here, because it probably won't be here, but it'll be someplace else.
Thank you.
Counsel Dina Tally?
Just to expand on that, we don't know why they withdrew this petition, but very recently we passed a law change that removes these hearings from our jurisdiction. They go to the zoning board of appeals. I don't know if that's in relation to this at all, but as Counselor Joseph said, beyond the, you know, I'm sure we can keep people apprised as well, but if this person were to resubmit this application, it would go before the ZBA, wouldn't go before us. So you would still be, you would still be notified, you would still attend, it's a public hearing, but just letting you know, I don't know why they withdrew it, but it's not the end. If they resubmit, it'll be at a different avenue.
And I can indeed confirm, so Butters will be notified by mail. It's also posted publicly so that, so that there is no confusion with regards to the notification process and the timeframe for which a permit hearing would be held. I have a motion and second to give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 6516 is given leave to withdraw. Moving back to the agenda, we have a special permit from the Shannon Grant. We have a presenter here this evening.
Good evening.
If you could just introduce the folks seated at the center table, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Good evening, counselors. I bring with me tonight Mr. Will Ronderos. He's our grant administrator for the Shannon Grant. And sitting next to my right is Kristi Andrews. She's my crime analyst, grant writer, slash, few other things.
Utility individual.
Utility, utility player. Tonight, there was a request from the council last meeting to give an overview on our Shannon Grants, and I thought it would be best if I brought Will in, since Will has extensive knowledge about the Shannon Grant program. Will's worked in the nonprofit field since 90, the mid 90s. Since 2009, he has served as the program coordinator for the Shannon Grant, for the Tri-City Anti-Gang Partnership, and without a doubt, he has more knowledge about the Shannon Grant than, than I could ever relay to the counselors. So I'm very pleased to present him this evening to give you an overview of the Tri-City program known as Shannon.
Thank you. Good evening, counselors. So I have a presentation today on PowerPoint, which I'd like to direct your attention to. What I want to do today is just start off by talking a little bit about, just give you an overview of the Shannon Grant and some of the key components of what the funding is looking for when it selects who receives the funding for gang prevention interventions. And I wanted then talk a little bit about the history of how the City of Fitchburg and this region in particular got involved in the Shannon Grant. And then lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the current funding that we're receiving this year and the strategies and the programs that are receiving the support. And then finally, I do have these packets that I'd like to present to you. All these are highlights for 2015 and also highlights, so highlights for our region and also the, those are the first two pages and the last two pages are the highlights for the statewide, overall statewide initiative. So you can compare those in relation to Fitchburg. There are about, if I am, somewhere in the ballpark of about 10 regions receiving Shannon funding at this moment. And I can provide the, the other reports for the other regions if you'd like me to do so, so you can compare where our highlights compare to those regions. So just to start off, I want to just mention that Shannon is a program that is funded, that is run through the Office of Executive, sorry, the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and has been around since 2006. There are, the, the funding has shifted in terms of its focus throughout the past 10 years or so. However, the, there are key characteristics that define this funding that we've, that has, that have allowed the City of Fitchburg and this region overall to continue to receive funding. So the, the funding characteristics are the, are the following listed on the presentation. And essentially, what they're looking for are programs that target specific areas and communities that are hotspots for crime activity. They, these are communities that have to demonstrate that, that they are implementing a multi-jurisdictional strategy and approach. So they're not looking for organizations that are working in silos and that are looking to fund strategies that do not build trust across the different jurisdictions of the communities. Additionally, any site receiving Shannon funding has to provide a 25% match in funding. And this is, this can be in many forms. It can be in staffing match or it can be in matching, match of supplies or rent or, as long as it's 25%, there has to be that commitment. And lastly, there is a, a local community, a local government agency has to be in full support of the initiative. In the past few years, we have had backing from, in fact, we continue to have backing from the mayor's office with primarily, the primary, the main grant being run by the Fitchburg Police Department. So the Shannon funding is guided by the OJJDP's model, the Gang, sorry, Comprehensive Gang Model, which has five core strategies at its, at its heart. And essentially, what, what this model says is that in order to create an effective approach to addressing gang violence in any community, you have to, your program has to incorporate each of these five components, and they are community mobilization, social intervention, opportunities provision, suppression, and organizational change and development. In essence, what this is saying is you have to not only provide prevention activities, but you have to have programs that actually directly intervene and provide viable opportunities for young, for at-risk young people to be able to receive additional support. So that could be whether it's a reintegr, a reintegration program, program through the courts or through the schools. Additionally, suppression is a component of, of this model. However, I have to say that suppression in this model is, is not the traditional approach of just coming in and conducting, for example, a hotspot patrol, but using law enforcement in more creative ways. So that would be conducting a truancy enforcement, which would be the traditional suppression model, but then combining that with a home visit and using that truancy enforcement opportunity to, to build relationships with families and with the young person to prevent any further truancy. And then the last two, which are organizational change and development and community mobilization, is essentially saying that in order to create a strategy that works, it has to build trust across different sectors of, of the community, and it also has to look at the systems and patterns within organizations or within the communities that are, that are allowing for youth crime to persist or that are not providing sufficient support for young people. And so it's really about addressing that and making sure that we tackle that and making changes at the systemic level. So in speaking about that, so the history of, of this community with the Shannon Grant started back in 2004. I wasn't necessarily around in 2004, but my understanding is that there were a series of articles that were released by the Center on Enterprise that received an award and recognition and essentially painted a negative picture of this community with respect to crime. And that led to the creation of a, of a gang task force, which the Fitchburg Police Department took, took leadership on. As a result of that, the community requested a series of trainings. The two trainings that were, that came up in 2005 were the Systems Thinking Training, which were offered by a couple of professors from MIT, who were leaders in the systems thinking field, and, and then Restorative Justice, which was led by the Center for Restorative Justice at Suffolk University. And what came out of those present, those trainings was that race and poverty were connected to the increase in crime in the region. And as a result, the Fitchburg Police Department took initiative to create a, a task force that would essentially look at those two issues in its community and identifying and articulating a new community policing strategy. In 2006, that was the first cycle of funding from Shannon that was, that became available. And given that we had done the work to create the gang task force, we were able to qualify for the initial funding. Funding, I think at that point, was probably around close to $300,000. Other cities received about a million dollars. We, we just happened to request about $300,000. And so our, our initial approach engaged three organizations, three social service agencies. In the following years, from 2007 to present, we've been able to engage a multitude of organizations across the region, so that includes Leominster and Gardner. We've been able to include, include Gardner Police Department, Leominster Police Department. And depending on the amount of funding, funding has fluctuated. At our lowest point, which was around 2008, I believe, sorry, 2010, we had about $95,000 in overall funding for all organizations. And last year, we had about $228,000. So based on, on the level of funding that we received, that has determined our level of strategy. So talking a little bit about, more specifically about this year's strategy, we, this year we are receiving $169,000, slightly over that, to support our overall strategy, which is three-pronged. The first strategy, the first component of our strategy is to implement targeted youth outreach and out-of-school life skills development activities. So these are essentially the, the social intervention, the prevention activities that have been proven to be effective in the communities and that need to continue to receive support. Secondly, youth employment opportunities and summer programming. This is through the Mount Wachusett Community College, which employs about 100 young people every summer. And also through the House of Peace and Education, which is based out of Gardner, Massachusetts, which employs about 10 young people or so every year through the summer camp program. And then the other organizations which receive funding in general for youth employment opportunities. That has, so youth employment has been an issue that has been brought up every, each year as one of the issues that, that can lead to young people just not having much to do. And thirdly, this idea of community policing strategy rooted in relationship building, drug abuse prevention, surveillance of hotspot areas, and truancy enforcement. So in essence, it's having police officers or law enforcement agencies use these activities as a way to build trusting relationships with young people. And, and using also that as an opportunity to build, build community with families. So if you look up here, this is our operational chart for this year. We have seven, a total of seven organizations receiving funding from Shannon Grant this year. Two of those are law enforcement agencies, which are Fitchburg Police Department and Gardner Police Department, and the other five are social service agencies, one being a community college. And as part of this approach, and also to address the organizational development piece, we have to have a steering committee, and the steering committee meets monthly to, in essence, inform the strategy and look at any of the needs that are, that need to be addressed in, in the, in the region. And Fitchburg City Hall has been the, the supporting agency, government agency in the region, with Fitchburg Police Department being the lead agency that overs, that provides oversight to the, to the management of the grant. And that includes overseeing the billing and also overseeing the reporting. And if you look up here, I talked about the OJJDP's Comprehensive Gang Model. This is just a visual to kind of show you where the, the efforts are focused for each, on this model by each organization. And as you will know, it's, a lot of the, the focus is really within the social intervention and opportunities provision piece. The area where we could continue to improve on is the organizational change and development piece, and that's something that we'll be addressing this year. So more specifically about programs that are being funded this year, we have the Fitchburg Police Department and Gardner Police Department as the two law enforcement agencies receiving funding for gang hotspot patrols, truancy enforcement and prevention, with Fitchburg Police receiving additional funding for mentoring and park patrols, which essentially includes having police officers at the parks during the summer, building relationships with young people and just being there to provide a safe space. And the Junior Police Academy, which has been offered for the past, I believe, four years or?
Five.
Five years, which engages approximately 40 young people every summer, around June time. And then additionally, Gardner is receiving funding for its anti-drug education and drug tape-back program, and this is in response to the growing drug overdose problem that they're witnessing in, in their, in their city. Continuing on with the programs that receive funding, we have the Mount Wachusett Community College's Division of Access and Training receiving funding for the summer program, which employs about 105 young people during the summer months and provides a safe space at parks across the three different cities. MOX Family Resource Center, which is working directly with the, the juvenile justice courts and is, is working more in a case management approach to support young men mostly to receive additional support systems after, once, uh, being integrated back into the community. And also to provide support for a homework center program that they're, that they're piloting this year. And the House of Peace and Education in Gardner, which is a small nonprofit, but is working very closely with the Gardner Middle School in reaching out to about 25 to 30 young men and women every year to engage them in meaningful activities after school. And then also, they have a summer camp that they run, which has been key in making sure that there, that there's something for young people to do during the summer months. The Shining Light Ministries, which is a fairly new organization, but is a spinoff of the Elm Street Congregational Church, and this organization is focusing on working with older young people between ages of 18 to 24. And the programming really helps to engage young people who may not be interested in the traditional dropout prevention, sorry, the drop-in center model. And so what they're doing is that they're using athletics and also an evening night program on Saturdays to engage these, these young people. So what they're doing is they're engaging some of the young men who used to attend a Wachusett Boxing Club and getting them to develop physical fitness goals, but at the same time using that as a way to start conversations about personal goal setting. And lastly, like our neighborhood center is receiving funding for, to support its general onsite youth development activities. And so this is a, these are the highlights for last year, which you have in front of you, and essentially, last year, we were able to reach a little over 1,650 young people. We funded 17 programs, and if a site has, a site can have more than one program, those are considered separate programs. So in total, we had 17 programs that were funded. As you will see, the majority of our focus has been on social intervention, which is pretty comparable to this, the overall state report around how funding is allocated. And, and then these are just some of the pieces that you see around the successes that we've seen around education, employment, law enforcement. I mean, we were able to engage 37 young men who were on the gang list last year, and then also some of the components that we, some of the achievements that we had around the personal development piece. And that pretty much concludes my presentation, so I just want to open it up to any questions.
Counsel Boach?
Reading this piece of paper you gave us just a minute ago?
Yes.
And I'm reading in the back page, the last page, and it says the economically disadvantaged. This says underneath, Fitchburg, we got about 53%. This program, does it help them with, to get the young people's skills? I'm a firm believer in skills.
Yeah.
I believe that today, I'm standing behind a machine and opening a cage and taking all the peas and shutting the cage, they're gone. They're going to China. And in today's industry, they want people with skills, and I'm talking about good skills like machinists and electricians and et cetera, et cetera. Are you doing anything about that, working in that area?
So this, this is something that has come up in the past, and we tried to work with the Workforce Development Board around, it's an issue because there isn't sufficient funding for youth jobs, so the piece around economic development is key. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to secure funding around that, to support that further. It's something that we do believe is important, though.
Yeah, because the only reason why I hear you talk and I, and I understand it, the basics, and I, and I haven't forgotten that I was a kid at one time. And if it wa, I don't know where I would be if I didn't have the opportunity to learn a skill. I mean, I graduated from high school and I wasn't, I'm not a college-type guy. I was just, I prefer to go to work and make a buck. And I think it took a lot of pressure off of me where I was earning a halfway decent living, not six figures, but I was able to starve for an ice cream and pay my bills and buy a house. But I had a skill, and I could go to different areas in, in the city or to the country or the state and apply for jobs, hire, instead of staying behind a cage and opening it up and looking at a piece of plastic to see if it's got burn marks and shutting the door for eight, nine dollars an hour. There's no future. You know what I mean? To me, there's no future in that. And that's why I, I always, when the school department comes here, I, I keep on pushing for skills, and I won't give that up. I know we have Monty Tech, but they got 367 students, and I think if the school was bigger, I think Fitchburg High School wouldn't exist, and I think everybody would be at Monty Tech. Because really, today you need skills, and today's economics.
Ms. Andrews, I believe you have something to, to address.
Primarily, in, in the region right now, most of the, the money is being focused towards young men and women ages. towards young men and women ages, I want to say in the grades, sixth through eighth grade. That's the majority of the focus where the funding is set. So it's pretty much going, a lot of it's going towards the programming, towards middle school and then very early high school right now. So it's not like the seventeen, eighteen, nineteen-year-olds, which they're most certainly included, but the focus tends to be grades like five through eight.
I was going to reiterate that, a significant portion of this goes to the Clegg On Center. You're, you're a part of the city. We're focusing at that age group. You make some great points, we're well aware of those, but a large portion of this focus is towards the Clegg On Center and, and some of our other partners, which were illustrated this evening.
And sometimes we can be, we have to follow whatever EOPS has for their model for programming and strategy. So if they have a specific thing in mind for an upcoming grant year, we have to make sure that we're in line with, with their objectives as well, as well.
Counselor Catty?
Thank you. You spoke about an executive board. How many people on the board? I don't want to know their names, but who are the people? What are their experience to be on that executive board?
So we have, we have two. We have the steering committee, which is comprised of one individual from each of the funded organizations, and that's chaired by Fitchburg Police Department. And then the executive board is, has approximately four to five people. One, who is Leona Shaw from MOC.
I'm sorry?
Leona Shaw from MOC. And we're also in conversation with Jim McGovern's office. Forget, so we're just starting to revive that, to provide additional oversight.
And who, who directs the funding? Who, is it the executive board or the steering committee that directs where the money is going?
So in the past, the mayor's office has made, has actually been the one who determined the level of funding that has been received, informed by the need of, you know, the need within the region. This, moving forward, and also to address some of the sustainability questions that have come up, we're looking to place that within Fitchburg Police Department's oversight and also the executive committee.
Just so I ma, make sure I understand. So in the past, the mayor's office would be the one that would direct where the funds go?
Mm-hmm.
And now you're trying to get it under the police department and/or the executive board?
Yes.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Currently, Counselor Captain Jeaniney is the oversight from the Fitchburg Police Department. Just to put a name with who's running it from our organization, but the captain's in charge of that.
Good, thank you.
Counselor Green?
I commend you for the effort that you continue to do in this program. And I couldn't help but realize, as you were talking, the correlation between having after-school programs or programs that keep young people off of the streets and keep them busy from certain hours in the day where they may be unattended, how important that is as a resource and as a deterrent to become involved in, in gangs. And, you know, when I hear grades five to eight, you know, you know that our world has changed because, my God, grades five to eight, we were just worried about recess and everything else. We didn't have the pressures like the kids have today. And I've heard Chief Martineau talk before in the past that we have to start educating our young people younger and younger and younger, not only on gang prevention, drug prevention, you know, mental health issues at the house. So, you know, is, are, are you comfortable with the target range being grades five to eight? Or would it be, would it be better, do you see it being even younger, being more useful?
I definitely think it's, would be useful to engage younger, a younger population. Unfortunately, with this particular grant, the, it starts around middle school, and funds cannot be used for, for younger children.
Do you have other funding sources to address the younger kids' aspect of it? Like, I know this, we're talking about the Shannon Fund, but is, or Shannon Grant, but are there other grants or programs currently used now to reach those younger people?
So, well, as a collective, we don't, but each organization does receive its own funding. And, for example, Clegg On Neighborhood Center does receive funding for different ages and younger ages as well.
Okay.
So they, this is more of a complement to, to what they're currently receiving. And as well as, the House of Peace and Education works for elementary school youth as well. So, yeah.
And, yes.
Yeah.
And for example, at the police department, if we are doing mentoring patrols, let's say at the YMCA, and there are children of that age range, they were most certainly not, going to not engage them in whatever is going on. So even though specifically we're targeting grades five through eight, those younger kids also are included in activities if there is something going on at the time, especially at, you know, if we're going to the Y, or if we're in the parks or at the pools. I mean, you can't not engage the kids just because they're a certain age, but the, the target of this grant program is that specific.
Currently, today, because we're at the end of the school year, we're focusing our attention on, on truancy issues. We had police officers deployed today, dealing with truancy issues, trying to get to the families, making home visits with families, trying to make that connection. So that's kind of the stage we're at right now. We're at the end of our school year, and we're really focusing our attention on, on that aspect of this grant.
And we will be continuing doing those truancy and home visits over the summer as well. So the officers have a list or, you know, have information of what kids who may have had problems over the school year, whether it was attendance, or detention, or just whatever issues may arise, they, they will be checked on over the summer through these home visits as well.
Well, I look through the, you know, through the toolage of Chief Martineau, that we've changed the perception of what police officers do in our community, that it's a resource, that children shouldn't be afraid of our police officers or our law enforcement agency. So keep up the good work.
Counselor Beazel?
Thank you. I, I-
You're next.
I'll just follow up with Counselor Green said. And I know when I was on the park commission and seeing the, the police in the, in the parks and seeing how they were interacting with the children and realizing that hopefully somewhere along the way, they understand. And it's, I mean, it's, it just seems like more and more we're talking about social issues within the community, and there's just so many of them. And, and, and I know that you're talking about what age group, and, and I'm saying as early as you can start them, and Clegg On Community Center, Boys and Girls Club, anything you can do for them. This may be a safe place for them to be. And it also will give them an opportunity to maybe take a deep breath and realize that there's more out there than what maybe they're seeing and encountering. So I commend everyone on that. And like I said, I, I wish there was more of it because, you know, as people get older, they're less apt to change their ways, and the earlier you can get them, the better off we're going to be. So, thank you.
Counselor Joseph?
I know, I think I was on one of the original steering committees when we, when you first came into town. And my concern back then was that a lot of the money was being spent administratively because they were just trying to get the strategy of what this Shannon Grant was going to do and who it was going to impact, and who was going to be involved in what groups. And Elm Street Neighborhood Church came on board, and a lot of things were happening back then. And that's why I had asked for this presentation, to see where you had evolved in. And now I see that a lot of, the majority of your money is going to organizations that are directly impacting kids today that are at risk. And that's why I wanted to see if, if you still were stuck on, what are we going to do with the money? But no, it's really hands-on. I mean, it's in the police department where I think it's a good place to be. And you, you see what the hotspots, where the people are that need intervention. And like I said, that's nothing more than seeing an officer on a bike down at Coolidge in the summertime, interacting positively with kids. And that, I mean, to me, that's where the money's at, getting into the truancy, giving them a place to go after school, like the athletic club. All of that stuff, I think, has evolved from that original steering committee. And I just, I want to thank you for the work that you've done because it, it seems to have evolved to something that is actually impacting the community in a very positive way.
It's been ten years in the making, and you, you are definitely correct. In those early years, there was a lot of organizational tragedies, and, and the funding was going to that. And now we have a clear, concise mission that we're trying to accomplish. And as you can see, the money's being well-spent on a broad range of, of different initiatives, not just law enforcement, but a broad range of initiatives.
Yep. Two thumbs up for the work. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
Chief, you talked about truancy. On a student, you have a student in Mrs. Court a few days, do you take the parents to court? Because wouldn't that be child abuse or something like that? You're hurting them physically?
I, I, as a law enforcement agency, we try to use court as a last result. A lot of, ninety-nine percent of the times, my police officers are able to intervene and not get to that, that level. That's, that's one of the significant advantages of a program like this. We're actually getting it to the house and talking to a, a parent, whether a single parent or dual parents, and we're, we're avoiding getting to that stage of going to court. And we've had great success with it. What's our last resort? And we, we try to avoid that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll just add, I, I think early intervention is key here. I think, I think the perception is always that crime is increasing and constantly going up, particularly in this demographic, that we haven't been able to confront these issues. But when you look at the statistics, you know, from the time these, this grant has been implemented in this city to, to today, we can see things like, one hundred and fifty simple assaults, a decrease in that demographic, twenty-five aggravated, and a slight decrease in robbery from, from their previous highs to, to where we are today. And I'd like to think that's, there's, there's a direct correlation to that population now falling, the population that received service and attention from the Shannon Grant to, to when they entered this particular demographic. So it looks like we're making progress. You know, it's a, it's a small, small range indeed, and, you know, it'll be interesting to see this play out over the next ten years, of course. But I think, you know, this is a positive direction. And there, it looks to show that there is a direct correlation between what we're doing here in the program through the Shannon Grant and what we're, what we're seeing, you know, on the streets and with our city's children. I think, you know, we were talking about like the deterioration of the family unit and how that, that impacts things. More and more, our schools are being forced to provide the parenting and the family skills and the socialization skills that they didn't previously have to do before. But that stops at 3:00 PM. And I think we've always talked about how do we close that gap? You can't, you can't provide parenting skills, you know, at all times through our public school system. This helps address that other area of when they're not getting that necessary intervention and education from the home unit, it sounds like you're doing it. So that's, that's remarkable, I think, there's, you know, I think that's, that's one of those societal issues that I think seem overwhelming when we talk about how do you provide care outside of the hours of school? But it seems like you're collaborating with all of the necessary partners at the table. And I guess the encouraging part is there's, there's still more partners out there that you can probably continue to expand your scope. And hopefully, Counselor Boishman's concern one day can be met, where we can look at, you know, job skills and workforce training as we get into those later years of those demographics. So I'm, I'm thrilled to see this, this direction and these results, and I'm thrilled to have you come before us. And I'd like to thank you, Chief, and Ms. Andrews, and congratulations. And thank you all for your efforts.
I hope this was helpful this evening. We thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you so well.
Back to the agenda. City Property Committee oral report. Counselor Joseph?
City Property Committee met last Tuesday. We have one item on the agenda. Seventy-sixteen, Mary J. Bohart, Economic Development Director, to declare as access the following properties and refer them to the chief procurement officer for advertising and sale. After a discussion, we approved the petition five to zero.
What is your report accepted second?
I have a motion and second to accept seventy-sixteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Finance Committee, Counselor Dina Tally?
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met last Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. Seventy-three sixteen, it was a loan order for nine-hundred-thousand dollars to pay for work at the Putnam Street Garage for repairs, including payments of costs incidental or related thereto. That was adopted. Seventy-four sixteen, an order transferring thirty-seven thousand to treasurer tax title foreclosure from accounts as follows, ten thousand from treasurer personal services and twenty-seven thousand from treasurer debt service. That was adopted. Seventy-five sixteen, an order transferring thirty-nine thousand from DPW municipal garage expenses to the following accounts, twenty-five thousand to streetlights, ten thousand to highway general personal services overtime, and four thousand to DPW snow and ice. And seventy-six sixteen, order appropriating sixty thousand, same be credited to fire personal services overtime and charge against available funds. That was adopted.
Counselors, just to make you aware, seventy-three sixteen will require a roll-call vote because of the amount of the loan order.
Motion to approve seventy-three sixteen.
I have a motion and second to approve seventy-three sixteen by roll-call vote. Speaking to the motion, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Beazel?
Yay.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Catty?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
President Kishmerik?
Yay.
Counselor Bean?
Yay.
And Counselor Boishman?
Yay.
The motion carries. It is unanimous.
Motion to approve the Finance Committee's report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve seventy-four, up to and including seventy-six sixteen. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. The motion carries. Public Safety Committee oral report. Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. We met tonight, May third, twenty-sixteen. We had three petitions in front of us. One was granted, that was petition zero-eight-zero-dash-sixteen. We granted a Class II car dealer license to Jeffrey Naughton, two-hundred River Street. We also approved of two communications from Solicitor John Barrett.
Motion to accept the Public Safety Committee's report. Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Safety Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. The motion carries. Public Works Committee reports. Counselor Catty?
Public Works Committee met on April twenty-sixth. Petition two-oh-seven-fifteen, Kenneth Mattson, president, to accept Downey Circle located within Parker Hill subdivision, Public Way. Attorney Watts will present this matter. It was held in committee. Personal Walt, uh, pers, Attorney Watts had a health issue and wasn't able to attend. Forty-eight sixteen, Counsel Angelo Beazel to review a water issue in front of eighty-eight Charlton Street, Fitchburg, that was granted. Forty-nine sixteen, Counsel Paul Boishman and John Jeffrey to request a tree cut down for safety purposes. The tree is located on Norfolk Street at Paper Road, as outlined in the petition. It was given leave to withdraw as that was determined to be private property. One-eight-one-dash-fifteen, Counsel Mike Kishmerik to increase the height of a city-owned fence on Blossom Street between the intersection of Elm and Mechanic Streets, was held in committee. Two-forty-two-fifteen, Counsel Paul Boishman to put a gate at the end of Shattuck Street because of illegal activities and dumping near the quarries. Many people in the street are complaining. That was granted. And last was eighty-one sixteen, Counsel Marcus Dina Tally and Jim Viola to repair, replace berms located on both sides of residence driveway. Berms were significantly damaged during the, with the plowing. Location is six-thirty-five mile lead and road. That was granted.
Motion to accept the Public Works Committee report. Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Committee Works report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Ordinances, forty-six sixteen, establishing a West Fitchburg overlay district as outlined, West Fitchburg Corridor overlay district as outlined in the enclosed ordinance. That's a final reading?
Forty-six sixteen be sent to its third final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Second.
I have a motion and second to send forty-six sixteen to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Eighty-two sixteen, amend city code, chapter fourteen, article one, sale of city-owned real estate, section fourteen-dash-two, procedure by adding paragraph H as follows, "Nothing herein shall prevent the duly appointed custodian of tax possessions from applying any procedure set forth in Massachusetts general law, including but not limited to MGL chapter sixty, section seventy-seven B for selling or leasing property." Reference petition sixty-nine sixteen, first reading.
Motion to send eighty-two sixteen to its first reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send eighty-two sixteen to its first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Petitions, eighty-three-
Eighty-three sixteen to its, eighty-six sixteen be sent to their respective committees.
I have a motion and, I have a motion and second to send eighty-three up to and including eighty-six sixteen to its respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just-
Thank a few people. Last Friday, in Pittsburgh, we had the naturalization ceremony in which over four hundred and fifty people became Americans that day. It is not an easy thing to do. And they did it legally, of which we're reading a lot about that nowadays. So it was a great day for people from all over these countries, many that you've never even heard of before. They also had the Special Olympics at Pittsburgh State, another great activity, hundreds and hundreds of kids and elders participating. It was a great day. And I'd like to thank all the volunteers that helped out that day. Thank you very much.
Counsel Joseph?
I'd like to thank everybody that came out for the Ward Six cleanup before we could go Saturday. I know it was a little bit rainy, cold stop, but it was turned out to be a good day. A lot of city folks out there helping out, and I want to, special thanks to IC Credit Union, Unitil for holding other things like the shredding, and the mosquito population people that grab the tires, and all of the people that support the city cleanups. The mayor and his wife, and Marcus for coming down and helping out. It was, it was a fun day. Thank you.
Counsel Boshman?
Yeah, I would like to say thank you to the people of Ward Two for their fine efforts in the cleanup that we had Saturday. We did a marvelous job. And of course, Pittsburgh Cleggorn, I'll do this off, Ward Two A and Two B, we're still that shining star. So I just want to let everybody know. And I want to say thank you. And thank you, Mayor, for telling me that.
Counsel Green?
Yeah, I would like to just remind everybody that Ward One cleanup is this Saturday, and the dumpsters are located at the Rollstone Street School.
Thank you. I'll also add a reminder that the Ward Four and Five cleanups will be held the following Saturday, in the spirit of cleanups, on May fourteenth. More information to come. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.